For the Yukon City Council, at this time if you would rise for the invocation by Pastor Gary Reynolds of the First Church of Nazarene and remain standing for the flag, please.
Our gracious heavenly Father, from whom all blessings flow, give you thanks this evening for these elected leaders and city officials who govern and lead us. We pray that their deliberations will be under the guidance of the wisdom that you generously give them even this evening. May we be a community that extends love that comes from you to everyone so that it might be for your glory, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Alberts, here. Smith?
Here.
Gerba?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Opitz?
Here.
This time we have a presentation. If Olivia would come forward with her mother. Hi Olivia, how are you tonight? You look pretty. Can you come with me and we're gonna turn around and look this way. Can you guys come up here? Here we go. Do you know why you're here tonight? Did you help your mom? Can you tell all these people? What did you do to help your mother? Did you look pretty? Can you smile? There you go. What happened was, I think that Olivia's mother was having some problems and Olivia, who is, how many years old?
Five.
Five years old, was able to help her mom. Now, can you look out here and tell all these people how were you able to help your mom? What'd you do? You know what you did with the phone? Okay, I'm not gonna put her on the spot because I don't want her to make her sweat. So you're not in trouble. You're here because we're very proud of you. What happened was Olivia's mother was having a health issue and she was incapacitated and Olivia picked up the phone and dialed 911 and helped save her mother. So for that, we wanted to congratulate you, Olivia. And we're gonna make this day your day so forever you can go to school and say, "This is Olivia Crawford Day today." So I wanna read what it says. It says, "Whereas, on Friday, August 31st, Olivia Crawford, a five-year-old kindergartner from Yukon, Oklahoma, was home with her mother and brother. And whereas Olivia found her mother on the floor and unresponsive. Whereas Olivia immediately called 911. And whereas Olivia calmly gave all the right information to the 911 operator. And whereas fire and IMSA arrived on the scene within minutes to stabilize her mother and transport her to the hospital. And whereas Olivia deserves our sincere thanks and recognition and praise for her quick and brave response and outstanding job in this time of crisis." So that means you did a really great thing. That's awesome. It's like Santa Claus coming. It's really cool. That's a good deal. All right, this is now, therefore on this day, I declare this day, what is today? September the 18th, 2012, to be Olivia Crawford Day. And I've signed it and the city clerk has signed it, so this is now Olivia Crawford Day. Thank you so much for helping take care of your mother and we are so happy that you are part of our community. Thank you very, very much. Mom, do you wanna say anything? Well, she, then she, she comes right naturally. But thank you so much and Olivia, she's a beautiful little girl and really brave and thank you for sharing. I saw it on Channel 4. I think it was on a Tuesday night, right after we'd had a meeting, but it was on. And so, thank you so much and thank you all for being a part of our community. And you might save that for later. It'll mean more to her than it does today. Thank you all. Thank you. At this time, we'll proceed to the visitor's section of the meeting. This is the opportunity for anyone that would like to address the council about a non-agenda item. If they would come forward, identify themselves, give us their address, and speak their piece. Your name, sir?
My name is Ward Larson. My address is 2520 West Olympic Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good to see you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Nice to see you.
And the council.
I thank and we'll wait.
The city manager. And even councillor. It's good to see, and Robbie, good to see all of you, actually. I'm here to speak briefly. If I'm allotted five minutes, I'll make it quick. There was an article that appeared in the Yukon Review this last Saturday. It was titled, oh, it's something about the feral cat review committee that has been formed by Councilman McCarron. And I have some, the article is well-written. I have a lot of respect for Jim Powell, who's proven himself to be a great journalist over the years. And, but the one thing that was lacking, I thought, either everybody there was in favor of going that direction or there was a failure to report any of the communication from people who feel differently than what the article presented. It stated that the feral animal committee was crafting a remake of the animal ordinance, of which, and I'm truncating some of this, provisions included non-domestic cats and other animals. And on down in the article, it talked about dogs being part of that. And one of the things that bothered me was the discussion of feral cat colonies and also feral cat caretakers. How in the world do you herd cats? That one is a puzzle to me. I don't know how we're gonna have colonies of feral cats without having them put inside of a fence or a pen. It makes no sense to me. Where are these colonies to be located? Are they going to be fed by citizens? How are they going to be fed? Or are they gonna be fed? And if not, then why are we gonna have them in colonies? What are the parameters of this feeding? How in the world will they be colonized, confined to the colony? And who's gonna pay for the food? Animal control is quoted as being a sponsor. And is there any estimate of the increase in the manpower costs, increase in equipment costs to make our animal control officers a sponsor? Sponsor being somebody who helps oversee the colonies and how things are conducted within the colonies, if I understood the article correctly. Costs, what are the costs on that? Pets and People was also identified as a potential sponsor. It seems to me, if memory serves me correctly, we had a problem six, eight years ago with Pets and People, who the city was helping to subsidize at the time, accepting animals from outside of the city and even from outside of the state into Pets and People's control. And here we were subsidizing animals coming in from everywhere. And I'm not sure what the cost to the city was on that, if any. But what are the costs? Here's an interesting one. Has anybody quantified the cost of the sterilization, the neutering of the pets? And vaccinations? One of the risks we run with the city accepting this responsibility is the fact that there was recently in Oregon, just this week, there was a case of bubonic plague caused by a feral cat. And this woman barely survived. And how about the first rabies bite if we're involved in supporting feral cat colonies? What is the city's exposure in that situation? And we have, there was a discussion of off-leash dog parks. Who provides the park? Where is it located and what is the cost of that? And what's the, there was a reference to the food sources continually move further away. I'm not sure from what in the article, but that was supposed to help somehow or other control the feral, the feral population, if I read that right. There's, constantly, there's been, throughout the country, there have been a number of feral cat situations like we're proposing here or being discussed here. At the, we, meaning city of Yukon. And every one of them has been an abysmal failure because as the number of feral cats continues to die out through attrition, disease, whatever else, there are other non-neutered, non-vaccinated, et cetera, cats that tend to come in and fill that vacuum of the cats that have been lost through attrition.
You're approaching your five minutes.
Okay. I don't know. I'll go right to the back and eliminate most of this. It seems out to me that we are protecting feral cats at the expense of state, by state statute, federal statute, songbirds, which are endangered or protected and also endangered. This year, I myself have quit feeding birds now because of the loss of three mockingbirds, one female cardinal, a nest of beuk wrens, and two red-winged blackbirds. In my own backyard, I've found the carcasses, what were the remains of the carcasses. They didn't die from bird flu or whatever it was. If anybody's taken a walk through the park lately and noticed there's one thing missing, there was a book written by a famous author about two or three decades ago called The Silent Spring. One thing I've noticed in the last year or two, you walk through the park, back through the backwoods area of our park, city park, there is an absolute absence of a lot of songbirds. There's an absence of any songbirds. And maybe it's time that another book be written and it's called The Silence of the Birds in our City Parks because we don't seem to have as many songbirds around as we used to. I'd like for this to be considered in whole rather than somebody jumping on the bandwagon because the politically correct thing is to try and get all parties to compromise on this. But sometimes politically correct thing is not the right thing to do. Sometimes you make the tough decision to make the right decision. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Would you, do you mind waiting around, Mr. McCarron? Councilman McCarron has worked a lot and held these meetings. Do you have time this evening to wait and talk with him?
Sure. I have talked to Councilman McCarron. I was going to attend the committee meeting on Monday. I had a more important conflict. My youngest grandson had his very first tee ball game at the same time, so I took that in instead. And I've kinda blindsided him because I didn't tell him I was coming tonight. I didn't know till this afternoon I was coming tonight, so.
We're glad you're here and you bring up several valid points, but I think he has answers for some of those or probably at least some comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors that would like to address the council about a non-agenda item? If they'd come forward at this time and address the council? See none. At this time, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council. Ma'am, did you have something? Do you mind waiting until after the meeting? Okay, and we'll take, and we will help you and take care of that. All right? At this time, we will recess. Any other visitors? I saw, you fidgeted just a little bit, so I wanted to make, any other visitors that have a non-agenda item? See none, then we'll recess at this time as the Yukon City Council reconvenes, the Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item of business is Item 1A. That's the YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of September the 4th, 2012, and B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $166.62. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Carron?
Yes.
The next items, 2A through 4B. Mr. Sigler, do you have some information?
I do. These next three items, Mr. Chairman, are utility rate-setting ordinances and ordinances are to be considered by the city council and not the Yukon Municipal Authority. So we have a little problem there and for which they need to be pulled. And we're also gonna update them a little bit. The ordinances were written such that the rate increase would occur in the middle of a billing cycle. And so, when it comes back to you, as the city council, next regular council meeting, that will also be cured.
So items 2A, 2B, 3A, 3B, 3A, and 4B are pulled from this meeting?
They are, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Then at this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If item does not meet with approval, all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of September the 4th, 2012, B, the payment of material claims in the amount of $346,714.75, C, the appointment of Marion Guy to the Office Number 6 of Spanish Cove Housing Authority as recommended by the Board of Trustees, designating the items on the attached list for the, from the Technology Department as surplus in authorizing their sale, donation, or trade, and E, setting the date of the next regular council meeting for October the 2nd, 2012, 7:00 PM. The council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on any item? Discussion?
Yes, I would, I know we have some folks from Spanish Cove here this evening and I would like to hear some opinions on Item C, on the approving the appointment of Marion Guy off to Office 6 of the Spanish Cove. I assume that's why some of our Spanish Cove residents are here.
So do you wanna pull that item?
Well, I didn't know if I could pull that not having made the motion, but yes, if it's possible, I would like to do that.
So, who made the motion?
Mike.
So that would, then he would ask, ask for?
Amendment.
Amendment?
Amendment of the motion.
Okay, so moved.
Do I have a second as amended?
Yeah.
Or I need to second the amendment, right?
Second.
Right, that's correct. So we can, so we can talk about it.
So we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
So now, considering Items A, B, D, and E, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll return to Item C. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Now's your chance.
My name is Dolores Privet. I've been a resident of Yukon since 1960. I have been a resident at Spanish Cove for nine years and I have served on the Board of Trustees for about six years. And I totally, totally and full-heartedly recommend Marion Guy as a trustworthy resident, as an intelligent and conservative resident, and as one who has been there several years and is also a former Yukon resident, but who is very, very interested in the welfare of the Cove.
Spanish Cove is still in Yukon, Ms. Privet?
Oh, yes. Well.
We're gonna keep you, okay?
We wanna be part of Yukon.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? I was, I was part of the panel that interviewed and there were three people and there were three excellent candidates and it was a, it was a long discussion afterwards and very meaningful and yes, there are very talented people and I think Ms. Privet and Ms. DeLong are asking to maybe help volunteer and do some community service work here with us, so. But they wanna be more involved in the city and thank you all for doing that. But any other discussion about Ms. Guy? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts? Yes. Congratulations, ma'am. The next item is 2. That'd be the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening, but they do start in October.
Great.
We'll have some.
All right. Next item is 3 and that's consider approving Resolution Number 2012-9, a resolution to declaring all public areas within the city of Yukon owned, operated, or controlled by the city of Yukon to be tobacco-free, requesting that all employees, agents, officials of the city of Yukon and that all visitors and patrons of the city of Yukon refrain from using tobacco products in all areas within the city of Yukon owned, operated, or controlled by the city of Yukon, directing the city manager to develop signage to notify visitors and patrons of the tobacco-free policy to seek input from citizens of the city of Yukon regarding the design of such signage and providing that the city manager, in cooperation with the community partners, shall implement a public awareness campaign to inform the public of this policy. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. McCarron?
Uh, none for me on that.
Nick?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith?
No, I think this is a fantastic idea and applaud, applaud that we have the opportunity to approve this resolution.
Mr. Opitz?
I think it's gonna be great. It's gonna be a healthier community, community.
Couldn't agree more. I think it's a great step. Health is such an important issue. I know I've said it 100 times, a billion dollars a year is spent on preventable illness. Governor Fallon talks about that. And one of, one of the main factors of that billion dollars that's spent every year is from tobacco and the illness is associated with that. So it's a courageous move on part of this council. I think it's a great step for our community and I think it's a great example for our young people. So congratulations, Yukon. I hope if we call the roll before I get ahead of myself.
Smith?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts? Yes. Congratulations, Yukon. There we go. The next item is consider approving a conditional use.
Who, who, who?
Mr. Opitz? I'm sorry.
Pause.
We know we never liked you, Rick.
Minutes need to reflect that you left the room.
Item 4 is consider approving a conditional use permit for 5-star Storage 111, I'm sorry, excuse me, 1777 West abandonment as recommended by the planning commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
I'd say we just let him sweat.
That's what I was thinking. Let's tell him it didn't pass.
John, you may, you may wanna tell everybody why you stepped out.
Just, Mr. McCarron's pointed out that, just to let the community and the people that are here, if we have an agenda item that comes up that we have some involvement with where we might benefit, Mr. Opitz is the owner of this piece of property and because it affected him, he had to excuse himself from the meeting. So, Mr. McCarron, that I asked, asked that I share that with you. I, thank you, Mr. McCarron, I agree. All right, we'll resume. Item 5 is consider a motion to approve an expenditure of funds for branding, for a branding agreement with North Star Destination Strategies, Inc., in the amount of $72,000 and outside costs not to exceed $5,000 from the hotel motel tax contingent upon approval by the city attorney. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Smith? Yes, sir. My, my personal opinion is, although I know how important it is for us to market our city, we need to bring in retail and various manufacturing, other types of businesses to Yukon to benefit our tax base. There are, I just feel like there's too much of the program that was proposed to us that overlaps things that we have already done. And I believe that if we were to turn our assistant city manager, who, if I understand correctly, is, has, carries the biggest responsibility of marketing Yukon, provide her with the right materials, that she would play a big part of this. But my, my heart of heart tells me, based on the information we've been provided, that much of what this money would be spent for has already been spent in other areas to provide the same information. So based on that, I have, I personally have some difficulty with approving this.
Mr. Opitz?
I feel like with the things we're doing with OU on the rejuvenation of downtown and they're working on that process and along with this process of branding, I think as far as my concerns about it, I don't have any concerns. I actually think it's a great idea because I've been a businessman for many, many years and branding is very, very important. And if you can differentiate yourself as a city for other people and for other businesses to come to this city and a reason why, I just think it's a great thing. I think it'll all work together for a great thing. That's my opinion.
Mr. McCarron?
I very much like recognize that certainly in a lot of cases, you really need to brand yourself and put yourself out in the community. I feel though at this time that we're kind of a crossroads in our direction and I guess I share with Mr. Smith down there in the sense that, you know, I'm not sure now is exactly the right time to do that. There may be an appropriate time a little later on, but my feelings are at this time that I'm not sure that this is the best direction for those, for those funds, so. That's my, you know, my personal feeling on it at this time.
Mr. Gerba, do you have comments?
Yes. Initially, I had reservations also. You know, I looked at the amount of money and I looked at basically advertising or branding and, and I think I thought long and hard about it as far as what, as far as our return on investment, is that a good way to invest our money? And ultimately, I think it actually is. And the reason is, I think, use the word crossroads. And right now, Yukon is like a lot of small communities around the Oklahoma City area. But I really think we are different and I think if we can pinpoint how different we are and what a desirable community this is, I think that $72,000 plus maybe another $5,000 would be a pretty good investment. I think it's gonna bring in the right type of businesses and it's going to attract the right type of people to our community. And I think maybe that's worth, it's a bit of a gamble, but I think it's worth it and I think ultimately it's gonna pay off for, for the city. And especially with what's going on downtown, I think we could really capitalize on, we were talking about the grain elevators, we're talking about some of the development downtown, revitalizing that area, I think is a key component to this. And if we can make that a part of this initiative, I think it's gonna be a home run. So that's why I think it's a good idea.
I tend to agree with what Nick says. I think that we're, there's an opportunity in Yukon that we probably will never see again, that will occur over probably the next five years, maybe 10 if it's drug out. But there'll be some development of commercial property if we're fortunate and some changes in our revenue stream. And with those, I think that it is an opportunity to manage it and part of managing that will require that it be marketed appropriately. When we see the golden arches, my little five-year-old knows that that's McDonald's. And when we see the blue sign, we know that it's Walmart and Sonic and so on and so forth. I mean, it just sticks in our head and I think that we need to be known across the state and across the country, if possible, as far out in our region as we can, that this is a place to come and shop and for you to spend your tax dollars and it's a great community. And I like the idea of someone on the outside looking in. We've looked at ourselves. It's a great place to live. That's why I continue to serve on the city council. That's why you all are here tonight. Thank you. But it's someone that's gonna come and look at us and take a different perspective and listen to our visitors and understand, help them to understand why are they here, why are they spending their tax dollars here in the community? So. Don McCann is here. Don, do you wanna address the council for just a minute and share and then see if the other council members would have any questions? Do you wanna share just a little bit of information about your company and address any concerns that you heard from the councilman and then I allow them an opportunity to speak again or address you?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Mayor, council, truly with you. We put this program together 12 years ago to help small communities be as competitive as they can be. And we've been doing that and only that for the last, last 12 years. And again, as I mentioned in the presentation, you know, a logo and a line doesn't, doesn't create jobs passionate people do. And passionate people that, that can articulate what's unique and special and distinguishing about the place creates more jobs. And so this works to allow the passionate people in this community to work a little more in harmony and allows that activity to grow as an asset and your brand to grow in equity over time to help you be more competitive. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to visit with you this evening and we'd be, we'd be proud to work with you.
Thank you. Any, Councilman Smith?
Yes, sir. Actually, I do have just, just a couple of additional thoughts. You know, we recently spent 65 grand for the study with.
Are there questions or?
Oh, no questions. No, just comment.
Let's go see if there's, Mr. Opitz, any questions?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions.
Mr. McCarron?
None for me, thank you.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith, additional discussion?
Would it be appropriate for me to add to the thoughts?
I think it is. I mean, we're still in discussion. Mike, it's okay for him to just?
Okay. We did just spend 65, or approved recently $65,000 for a study in conjunction with. with OU for revitalization, beautification of Main Street from UConn Parkway, I believe, all the way to Gark Brooks Boulevard. Is that all part of the study?
And maybe, and including our arterial streets.
The passionate people that were referred to, if I understand it correctly, are going to be the corporate leaders of this community. Those that have a vested interest in marketing the city as it is. I don't know that we need to spend the additional monies in order to make that happen. And we need to understand, too, that marketing this program is not part of the services, as I understand it, to be provided by this company. The marketing would be the responsible, responsibility of the city after the information is provided. And again, that's the portion that I think that we're overlapping, I believe, with the money that we've spent in the recent past in order to provide similar information without marketing services to go along with it. I believe that we have people on staff that can take that information without the additional funds being spent and assist in marketing UConn in a more positive way than maybe that it's being done now. That's all.
Anyone else have additional comments?
I do.
Mr. Opitz?
I just want to tell you that it only takes one large or medium-sized extra business because of our branding that would actually pay this. We're going to get a lot more than that out of this. We have the potential to get a lot more out of that than one extra business coming to town. So I really think it's important that we really take a hard look at doing it.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
McCarron.
No.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
Item six is the city manager's report. Item passes three to two.
City managers, go.
Item six, city manager's report. Mr. Bonham.
Sales tax report. This was for the collections in September reflected in the sales of July. I am proud to announce that our sales tax collections were up 8.39%, which brings our total annual year-to-date growth to 7.65% for the year. Additionally, our use tax was up by 55.27%, and that brings our annual year-to-date growth to 53.86%. I like to talk on these kind of months where we have a really good report like this, because if you look at the trend lines and you look at what's going on across the metro, and particularly the west side of the metro, this is really good news. And the trends appear to be set, and I anticipate being able to give you more good news as the months move forward. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit about events. We all know that for Saturday in October, we have check day in UConn, and this town plays host to somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 45, depending on who's doing the counting, a thousand people that line Main Street and celebrate our heritage of being a check community early on. And I think it's wonderful. Our staff is, while this is not an event sponsored by the city of UConn, rather it is Oklahoma Checks, Inc., that this is one of their events, we do help and partner with them and support them in any way that we can to make it a successful event. We hope all, everybody will come down and do that. We also had, a week ago, on Friday, we had the grand opening and ribbon cutting for the new fire station. There were somewhere between 250 and 300 people that attended on Friday, and it was a wonderful event, and really, I think showcased the fire station in a very good way. Then on Saturday, I was amazed. I went down on Saturday to, thinking that it would not be that many people on Saturday. There were 500 people that showed up on Saturday morning to go through the fire station, and kids climbing on the fire trucks, and it was a great day. Since then, since last Saturday, in this, we have toured over 500 more people through the fire station. And it has, it's received rave reviews, and I'm very proud of it. Also, we had National Night Out that we celebrated in the park earlier, well, in fact, last weekend. And there were 382 people that chose to come out and help us celebrate National Night Out. Chief, good job. Appreciate your work and your effort of you and your staff. Thank you. Also, I think it's important that as we move into another season of festivals, we are already in the parks. We are about a week ahead on putting the lights in the trees and starting to set up the, all the displays and get ready for another influx of what really and truly could be well over 150,000 people. It traditionally has, we really, you know, the big news now for Christmas in the park is to go rent a limousine and have them drive you through the park, or a party bus, or even rent a helicopter and have them fly you over the park. So it's a little tough to count all those folks, but there's a bunch of people that come to town, and our staff does a great job. Mayor, with that, yes, on the prayer breakfast, we have had trouble coming up with a appropriate speaker for that, and it has been postponed until the spring. It has not been canceled. It has been postponed, and you can look for that in the spring. Mayor?
We'll have some discussion with the other council members for planning purposes with that at our next meeting also. Next item is item seven. That's new business. Any new business? None this evening? Council discussion. Mr. McCarron?
Well, I'm pretty excited about check day. I am every year, because I probably enjoy kolaches as much as anybody else. As a matter of fact, I think I enjoy them more than most. Also, it's really nice to hear the mayor's and city manager's comments about our Christmas in the park. I'm sorry, I was just gracing, but, you know, I went out there, I was in the park this morning, and walked around and saw them putting up the Christmas lights. And I think back from some comments that I've had from people who live in other places around Oklahoma City, who used to drive down to Chickasha every year. And they don't do that anymore. They come out here to see ours, because it's just as good, if not better, than any other display in the state. I'm pretty proud of that. I think it's something that's pretty neat for UConn. I think it's one of those things that is pretty special. But when I hear other people telling me they're not going back to other places specifically so they can come out here, I think it's pretty nice. The, for the six people who haven't been to the fire station yet, I also encourage them to go as well. I went out both for the ribbon cutting and fortunately had a tour. It is a wonderful facility. Really glad to see it here in our community. I think it's a big improvement. UConn is a good place to be. With that, that's all. Mayor?
Mr. Gerba?
Okay, just a couple items. One thing I wanted to say is how proud I am of the UConn Fire Department. They participated in the 9/11 memorial stair climb at the First National Building downtown. Those guys in full gear walked up 29 floors of stairs three and a half times, basically equating to the 110 stories of the World Trade Center in full gear. It took about an hour and a half, and my hat's off to all those guys that did that. And by the way, UConn had more participants than any other fire department in the area. So, you know, we're just talking about how phenomenal our facilities are. I think the people we've got manning those facilities are even more phenomenal. So I just want to say congratulations to those guys and how proud we are of them. Second item. Habitat for Humanity is going to be building five homes here this fall in UConn. It's going to be in the Wagner Lake Estates, and they need volunteers. Starting Saturday, November the 3rd, they're going to, they're looking for about 35 to 40 people to help them out, start framing those homes. So I'm just basically throwing the word out there, and anybody who wants to get involved, it'd be really great for, you know, any of the civic groups here in UConn that want to help out. Go out there and give them a hand, because it's a really good time, and it's a great way to spend some sweat equity helping somebody else out. The contact information is Rick Lord. You can get, reach him at 232-4828 if you want to volunteer. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to make comment on the upcoming events. It's nice to hear that we are a week ahead of schedule on our Christmas lights, because there have been rumors out there that, you know, we were going to be condensing the display and condensing the time that we have to put it up, put it back. And I think what's happening, actually, is we're becoming more efficient at what we're doing. And the fact that we're ahead of schedule is a great testament to that. So I appreciate that. Also, our sales tax projections, the 7.65 year-to-date is, you know, I know I'm premature in saying this, but, you know, it's very, very positive when we set our budget projection out for, I believe it was 3.9?
About 4.
About 4% approximately, and we're at 7.65 now. That is very, very good news, and I hope we're able to maintain that track. Need to let people know that, you know, if they're having, I've had some comments on water bills, inaccuracy of water bills. You know, there's a couple of things that can be done in order to identify whether or not you're really using that amount of water. I believe, and correct me, Mr. Manager, if you would, I believe that a leak check is available to homeowners within the city of UConn. If you feel like you've had a spike, so to speak, in your water bill, contact the city utility department, and I believe that they will arrange that for you to make sure that you don't have a leak somewhere. They can set your meter, or look at your meter over, is it over an hour projection? Is that what, how that works? They...
There is a timeframe. Arnold, I'm not sure how long they...
I'm not sure either.
I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe it's one hour. They mark it at one hour, come back an hour later and monitor. I could be wrong.
Sometimes they do, just, they stand there for 15 minutes and watch it.
Okay. Well...
Great period of time, watch it.
Yep, and I appreciate that. The point I wanted to make was that that leak check is available to you if you're having issues. It's something you need to look into. I would also like to acknowledge former Councilman Ward Larson's comments from earlier this evening. Made some very, very, very good points, I felt, and I believe that people should look back into what he had to say. And I believe our, my fellow councilmen should also consider those remarks when it comes time. If we do have this change in an existing ordinance brought before us, that we consider those points that were brought this evening. Just one more thing. I had a call from a citizen this past week that felt like with the infrastructure improvements that we're making on some of the interior city streets, which are fantastic, by the way, and I'm so proud to say that we've completed, I think, six in the last 90 days or so, whatever that timeframe is. His question was, why we haven't considered sidewalks in some areas that they don't exist now. For example, Cornwell, from Vandement to Main Street, you know, there's a lot of people, a lot of foot traffic in that section of our city. There's not a single sidewalk in that section of our city. So his question was, and I believe it was a valid question, why don't we consider, if it's possible, to add sidewalks in those areas? So I just throw that in your lap there, Mr. City Manager, and you have fun with that.
Mr. Opitz?
What a marvelous city we live in. Folks, I'm originally from Binger, Oklahoma, and let me tell you what a marvelous city we live in. From all the great functions that we have from Christmas in the park to the Fourth of July to you name it, it's just awesome that our community can participate in those first-class functions, and they are first-class. We have a first-class education in this town, in this city, first-class police and fire department. And you can just go on and on and on and keep bragging about our city, but what a marvelous city that we live in. To keep those tax revenues coming in, shop UConn. Okay? Shop UConn. Yeah, go ahead. Give yourself a hand, because we want you to shop UConn. And anybody that's not a participant in the shop UConn program that wants to be, be sure and tell people, shop UConn. Okay? Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Larson, we're a chatty bunch tonight, aren't we? Well, I have a lot of notes, so here we go. One is, I'm excited about the opportunity with North Star, and I appreciate the conversation that we had this evening. And I, too, initially were a little bit reluctant about the investment. But I think with the developing relationship that we have with the Chamber of Commerce, the new energy that is at the city, combined with North Star, and I agree that we've spent some money in the past, but I think with the opportunity in the future, knowing that we're going to work well with the Chamber, with city leaders, I see this as a real opportunity and look forward to that. Couple of other things. I've asked Grayson, and I've spoken with Chief Corn a little bit about getting some information about red lights and stop signs in UConn. And there was a conversation tonight in our pre-meeting about a wreck that occurred at a stop sign. Stop signs means stop in UConn, and yellow lights don't mean speed up. So I've asked for some statistical information to talk about how many accidents occur at intersections here in the community, and hopefully that'll be forthcoming. But I would like to maybe start some public awareness, some warnings about the community, and maybe something in the paper that we need to be more conscientious. We talked about a couple of different accidents this evening. A rollover accident involving a councilman's son. I'm aware of a friend that was in a rollover accident out by Baptist Hospital. All occurred at intersections, all involving stoplights. So I hope that maybe we can take some initiative to make the public more aware and more conscientious, and then maybe, I certainly wouldn't suggest passing out citations, but maybe some warnings. You do have warnings, Chief Corn, is that correct?
We still have some.
Okay, they have, they have a few left, so. And then the last thing, Rick says that, I mean, what an amazing and marvelous city we live in. And we talked about check day, new fire station, all the upcoming developments, et cetera. But I want to tell you a little, a quick story. Reverend Yance told us in church on Sunday at the Methodist Church that Mayor LaGuardia in 1935, he was, had been a congressman, and later in the 30s ended up being the mayor in New York for many years. But he goes into the city court one night and tells the judge, step down, I'm going to run the court for the rest of the night. Well, one of the people that come up in front of him was a grandmother who had stolen a loaf of bread so she could feed her grandchildren. And the businessman who owned the business was furious, says, you need to fine her the maximum fine, because if you don't fine her, then it will not set an example to these other thugs and everything running around in our neighborhood, and they'll keep stealing from me, so you need to fine her. So the mayor looks at her and says, ma'am, it's terrible, but I am going to have to fine you. And he fined her, I think the fine was $20. And soon thereafter, he reaches in his own pocket and pays the $20. And then he says, I'm going to fine every one of you in this courtroom tonight for allowing a grandmother to live in a city where she has to steal to feed her grandchildren. Now, they told that story because Manapantrey, who's right over here, is hurting for food again. And we talk about the haves and the have-nots, and we're so grateful for all that we have, but do not forget your neighbor. And this time, as we start to work toward Christmas and talk about all the celebrations, and it is a great city, but share that wealth and that greatness with your neighbor. You don't even realize sometime the person sitting beside you in church, or the little kid that goes to school with your child, they don't have anything to eat. So if you can, if you've got a dollar, or 50 cents, or $5, Manapantrey could sure use some help. And UConn is a great... And Yukon is a great place, Rick Opitz. And I know that Manapantrey shelves are going to start getting full. With nothing else before this council tonight, we stand adjourned.